Why don't we go ahead and call our meeting for one, please? I can ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence. Mr. Leslie, if you feel a pleasure, please, just a little. Shall we pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we call the roll, please?
Mrs. Tinker-Ardley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Tinglestein?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Good, we have a quorum, thank you. Each of you have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting of October 28th. If you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Question for approval, Mayor.
One second.
And second. And no further questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, minutes are approved. Item four on the agenda, each of you should have received a copy of the latest check register, if you would indicate if you received that in your package, thank you. And now we are, Andrew, would you see if we have any public comments? I didn't pick up this year.
Nobody signed up?
Okay. So there are no, there's no one signed up for public comment?
Well, it gives you more time, doesn't it?
That's right, well, thank you Marvin, I do have some major comments.
I figured that.
I'll see if I can balance out this just a little bit for folks. First off, let's acknowledge as a group that Veterans Day, and thank you for the council for meeting on Veterans Day, many things are closed today, except your city staff was dutifully at work today. But I did see a lot of great references to the holiday and the meeting for the holiday all over Facebook. Also wanted to mention to the council, just some updates on Cardinal Drive, and in particular, after the headlines of the weekend newspaper. Council is aware that we have been working on Cardinal Drive and improvements to Cardinal Drive for five years, and have worked very hard to make Cardinal Drive work. Was disappointed that this was brought to the fiscal court, but never brought to the city. This was, the sheriff did not discuss this with the police department, with our engineering department, with Andrew or me. And I do want the council to know that for the last four years, the Georgetown Police Department has made this work with double the traffic that exists this year.
I was there, I know.
We, we made it work, Todd, because the procedure that the Georgetown Police Department put in place was very disciplined, and we, at a very precise time, every morning, we changed the first sign, and then we moved through the process of changing the other signs. That discipline is why we made it work with twice as much traffic. Hopefully, the chief and the sheriff have had an opportunity to speak today. Again, we have been working on trying to make the physical improvements to Cardinal Drive for four years. Eddie updated me today and let me know that right away, or excuse me, utility rightaways are being obtained for the Cardinal Drive project, and final bid specs are being drawn. So, the work you all have been doing for four years is going to continue to pay off, but the headline was unfortunate. Wanted to ask the council your opinion of our second meeting in December. And traditionally, we have canceled that second meeting in December, and wondered if the council might want to consider that now and go ahead and get it on our calendar.
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made to cancel the second meeting in December.
Second.
With the second, thank you. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We've got a Christmas parade on December the 7th, it'll, it'll be on top of us right away, so that should be a good time. Also wanted to make sure that each of the council members are aware that we will be dedicating, Fire Committee saw the plans for a new fire training area at our Lexington Pike Fire Station, and that has been built, and we will dedicate it on November the 19th at 11 o'clock in the morning. So a little mini ribbon cutting for our new training facility out there. Pretty cost effective, we bought storage containers and welded them together, and made a very effective burn area. And Marvin, that is all I have under Mayor's.
Well, you did a great job, Tom.
It was fairly abbreviated today. Let's see, item seven on your agenda is Parks and Recreation, approval of playground surfacing bid.
Very good evening, everyone, I'm Robin Allen, I'm not Sherri Nicholas, Sherri wasn't able to attend today, but I come to ask approval for the playground surfacing bid that you guys received.
Mayor, I'll make approval for it.
Thank you, motion's been made, and second. Any questions for Robin? Oh, come on, we're gonna torture her a little bit.
Don't do that.
Let her go home.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, Robin, thank you. Anything else for us tonight?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Let's see, under City Attorney, this will probably disappoint Mr. Langford, but I'm gonna ask council to, for items A and B, which is second reading of an annexation ordinance and second reading of a zone change ordinance, I'm gonna ask that those be held until the next meeting. Matt Summers with Planning and Zoning, but Planning and Zoning's off today, they must have the county holidays. So, Matt Summers was not working today, he's not here tonight to answer questions. I only learned this afternoon that this might be a controversial vote and a split vote, and could even result in a tie vote. And I would like for Matt here to help each of us understand the issue better, and would like that same opportunity myself. So Bruce, we'll put that off for two weeks.
Is a timeline okay for the, for the zone change?
Yeah, it should be good, I believe.
Should be, or is?
I don't know. That was just last month's planning commission.
They have to be, they have 60 days, I'm pretty confident.
I think it's a little more than that, but. Agreed with that, last month's planning commission.
Mayor, may I say something? Yes, sir.
If the annexation is not controversial, could we go on with that?
Well, I would recommend doing the two at the same time, just because if, if the zone, I think it could impact council's decision whether to annex, I think the two go hand in hand. I'd say.
I think for, in being fair to the council, I would like to do both at the same time. I think that would be more fair to a council member as they anticipate their vote to do them simultaneously, after all the questions are answered.
I was just thinking about fairness to the property owner, that's my job.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we, we will treat them fairly, but I would like to put this off for two weeks.
Okay. What can I say?
Who, who, what was, what was the date of the planning commission hearing, do we have that?
Do you have, do you know the date of the planning commission hearing? It's not in this bracket, so I would have to go with that bracket.
Yeah, I know. September the 12th?
September the 12th.
Sixty days, then.
September the 12th. You'll be beyond the 90 days, but I'm not gonna make an issue of that.
Was it 90? Is it 90 days or 60?
Sixty days and 90 days.
It's 90 days.
We'll move on to another agenda, let me do some second reading real quick.
I'd rather, I'd rather have action than absolute or automatic.
Yeah, Bruce, Andrew's gonna do some checking online, we, if it's 90 days, we have adequate time to do this. If it's 60 days, then, if we've never been this time constrained before, I can't imagine we would.
Usually, we have a little extra time in there, but we've cut it down to the wire
Yeah, for now, Bruce, until Andrew gets me more information, I'm gonna assume that we're gonna pass on it tonight. If, if I'm told that we have to vote on it tonight, or it's an automatic yes, then I'll change that decision, and council can debate it and vote. But if it's 90 days, I'd prefer to have the.
You want, I'll wait around for him to?
Yes, sir. And while we're waiting on that, if we could move down to item C, under City Attorney, is first reading of an amendment to the Human Rights Commission ordinance, sponsors, Ms. Lesby and Mr. Showalter.
An ordinance amending Georgetown Code of Ordinances, Chapter 5, Article 2, regarding the Human Rights Commission. Summary, 1, amends Chapter 5 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances to create a Georgetown Human Rights Commission. 2, establishes the membership and powers of the commission and provides for enforcement of order issued by the commission. 3, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, severability of provisions, and effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the Georgetown City Clerk's Office, 100 North Fork Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www georgetown ky dot gov. Introduced in public red for the first time November 11th, 2019.
Thank you. That'll be first reading, and we would intend to vote on that at our next regularly scheduled meeting. If there are any questions, please get a hold of Mayor David.
So what does it say, or what's it, what's it about?
It, it essentially changes our ordinance to provide for a five-member Human Rights Commission from Georgetown. That Human Rights Commission would hear only the cases involving sexual orientation and gender identity. All other cases would still be heard by the state of Kentucky. We will, the ordinance also has the council specify one individual to receive complaints.
The commission.
The commission will decide that. Who that one person could be, we can make a case for it being the city attorney, we can make a case for it being the city clerk, but we'll let the commission itself make that decision about how to handle the process. If complaints come in that are of a federally protected class, we would simply forward them straight on to Frankfurt. We would only hear the ones locally, for those two new protected classes.
Okay, what does it mean on page three, section A?
Read section A. That's the process for enforcement, as in if, if they create an order, so, so they hear the complaint, they say, okay, we found a violation, this is what we're gonna do. The section above that tells you what they can do, they can assess a penalty, or they can issue an order saying essentially, stop this conduct, this discrimination under this ordinance. But that would be in the case of, how do you, how do you compel compliance with that order? So that's, that's a process after they make that determination.
Okay, so it says filing a complaint in the circuit court. So when they do the process, all right, find a violation, or they can find a violation. So when they find a violation, they would tell the person, this is a discriminatory practice, stop doing this, or they can give them a fine, right?
They could do both, or either, yes.
Or either. But then, so if they do the fine, if they say, stop the practice, do the fine, why does something go to the circuit court?
If they don't pay their fine, or if they don't actually stop from the discriminatory practice. So it essentially would be like, it's, it's up the administrative body through this hearing process, and then that would be the next step, just like so many of our other administrative, I'll use code enforcement as an example. If the code enforcement process plays out, after the administrative process is over, it goes into the judicial process for enforcement. So if somebody didn't pay their penalty, or didn't abstain from the behavior, that would be the next step of recourse the person could have.
Okay, so is that kinda like what they did with the t-shirt company in Lexington? That they told him to take discrimination training, and he refused to, so then they took him to court?
To enforce that order of the Human Rights Commission, yes.
Okay, so it's the, which was the confusing part of that case, I think, on, so, why wouldn't the, oh, okay, so it would be that our Human Rights Commission that would take it to court? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So like the fees that, with all the t-shirt company had, they had, they had to pay their fees on their side, and, but there was.
Anybody seeking to enforce the order, I'll say like that, it doesn't have to be the Human Rights Commission, anybody seeking to enforce the order.
Okay.
Anyone withstand it, as we've learned.
Right, right. The fines are gonna be, the fines that they put down, like a hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, or whatever, that's gonna be paid to who?
To the person who suffered the discrimination.
Okay, so, so necessarily, if the person just got discrimination, then they could take them to the court?
Right, the person, yeah, the person who, and that's what Andrew just said, the person would have to have standing, so the person who's actually been discriminated against would have to be the person seeking to enforce the order.
So we're not gonna take them to court?
No, no, the person, any, any person who's suffered the discrimination would go to court.
Okay, because like Lexington, Lexington took them to court.
Right, and they, well, they talked about the GLSO was the, was the plaintiff then, and that, that's why, is that they don't have standing, that's not, that organization can't claim that they were discriminated against as an individual entity.
So we're not gonna take people to court? We're gonna determine that there's a finding or not finding, and then if the individual wants to take them to court, then they can take them to.
To enforce the order that the Human Rights Commission, yeah.
And the only two orders that the Human Rights Commission is going to, to put is a fine of up to $500, or to cease, to cease whatever the practice is.
Right.
Okay, all right. So let's say, the practice is discrimination against, say it is marriage, and you're not wanting to do, not wanna do flowers for a wedding, so with a gay couple, so then, would it be, do you think that would come down as a fine, or say, okay, just quit your practice, so from now on, if another gay couple comes in, you have to do the wedding? Can they go to that extreme to say that? Because seriously, the discrimination practice is because you won't do the flowers for the wedding.
Yeah, if they say cease that practice, then yeah, that's what I'm saying, that that practice is discriminatory and subject to whatever penalty they decide to impose.
No, I thought the penalty would be the hundred dollars to the 500 dollars.
But they have the, they have the discretion to pick the amount, I'm saying between that range.
Between that range.
Right, absolutely.
Most, okay, right. You start, Andrew. Thank you.
And I had some questions on it. On the section 516, it says about membership, it just, it says the five members, we need to put in there that they're Georgetown residents, it does not have in there that they're not, that they're Georgetown residents. We need to have in there that they are Georgetown residents, and I think it would be good that they have a residency of at least three years, but it, we do not, we do not mention Georgetown residents in there at all, so we need to put that in there, if it's gonna be the Georgetown Human Rights Commission.
Okay, I can't, I can't, I'm trying to recall if our, our ordinance that dictates for all commissions has that language or not, and I'd be glad to look at that, because I don't know if we have a county or a city, I think we cover that at some point, but I'd be glad to.
Yeah, I think it needs to be in there, because if it's not in there, then it doesn't hold.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying our, our section that talks about all of our different boards and commissions, so I would have to.
Yeah, but I mean, you would need that in there if it's a Georgetown one. And then also on the proposed members of the Human Rights Commission shall appear before the city council, if we could have the people that are, you know, been nominated to come and speak to the council, so we could at least ask some questions, because I feel this is such an important issue, and it's the first time we're setting this up, so I think we really need to be very careful how it's set up, and to set it up right for everybody. So I think it would be.
I'm likely not to do that, Polly.
Really, why not?
The mayor makes appointments, and the council ratifies.
Can we at least see resumes, find out about them?
We'd be happy, like we've done with past practice, to provide resumes.
Okay, resumes at least.
But interviewing people for a board appointment, no ma'am, I'm not gonna do that.
Well, I just feel it's such an important issue, and we really need to make sure we have the right people on the board, I mean, to protect everybody on both sides.
I hear you.
Okay, alrighty, and then section 517 with powers, it goes down to 517, section 1, the Human Rights Commission is authorized to, and it's, a lot of that's marked out, it says, "Receive or initiate complaints in the following manner." Receiving a complaint is when somebody brings a complaint to you, "I was discriminated against." The way I read initiating complaints, it makes it look like the Human Rights Commission can go out and go after businesses directly.
That is, and I'll, I'll say, that is standard language that I read in every Human Rights Commission ordinance that I reviewed.
Well, we don't have to do it, though, it might be in every Human Rights Commission, but.
I'm just telling you that that's, I looked at all, and actually, this is the section about how we determine where complaints go for all other classes, and those protected under the fairness ordinance. Like, I actually went through all the ordinances of other jurisdictions, other than the ones that hear them themselves, Lexington and Louisville, to kinda see how they approach that, how they, how they use the language to, to determine where the complaints went, so I'm obviously open to any opinions, I'm just letting you know where it's at, that language.
Well, I think.
But it's pretty standard.
Yeah, I think for our constituents and the public, they're going to feel like, oh, they can initiate complaints, like I'm gonna be investigated. You know, if there's people on the board that don't like me, I'm gonna be investigated. And when I read initiate, that's what scares me, language wise. And I know it might be in, it might be in the language, and it might be in that, but this is our Human Rights Commission, so we can structure it how we want to. And then going down about hiring executive director, legal, and clerks and all that, is that in the plans, to hire an executive director?
At this point, it is not. We intend to make the board, the Human Rights Commission, an unpaid board.
Okay.
That meets only as necessary.
Okay, but if we put this in there that they can hire an executive director, legal staffer, clerk, down the road, they can do that without our authorization, correct?
See how funding would have to. If they had, if they had funding.
If they had funding.
They're probably not gonna get funding unless it's from this council.
Yeah, well, we'd have to fund it, okay. And again, at the bottom, the, I'm a little nervous, they will not be able to delegate responsibilities to any other governmental body or agency, will they?
What section, even?
Towards the bottom, I mean, I just wanna make sure that nothing can be delegated.
Are you looking at section 7 there, where we set appoint an administrative?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, and the purpose of that is simply for receipt of complaints, so that we don't have this, for example, if a complaint comes in based on disability discrimination, it would kinda be silly to have this entire board meet when they're not gonna hear the complaint, just to meet, to accept service and, and forward it. So, the purpose there would be to kinda funnel, we do the same thing with other commissions, just have an administrative person appointed to accept service.
Accept things, okay.
And schedule meetings of the board.
Okay, and then on it, if somebody's accused of a violation, it doesn't really say that they shall have the right to appear with council? Is that something that we can add? Because I think if somebody is, you know, accused, they should have the right to appear with council and have witnesses, if, you know, and I didn't know, you know, if that's something that the Ethics Board does, but I think it would be helpful to have that if somebody is.
It's under 517, number two, compel the attendance of witnesses and production of evidence before.
Well, it is there, but it doesn't say, it doesn't say the person that's accused, it just says witnesses, so you could just have witnesses and not have the person accused be able to defend themselves.
No, I think the intent would be for an attorney to certainly be able to be present, I mean, that was never insinuated otherwise.
Yeah, well, I think we need to have that in there, though.
They can do that with the ethics as well, or probably any of the others.
Yeah, because section two refers to when there's a subpoena issued, witness production evidence, but subpoena, is that the one that you were looking at, Todd?
Uh huh.
Yeah, but that's with the, the county circuit clerk, not with the Human Rights Commission.
Well, yeah, it's with the commission, that's just who issues the subpoena, that's, that's who would issue any subpoenas, so, but I understand what you're saying, you just want to clarify that, that council can be present if the person, if the person is.
Yeah, well, they need to be able there to answer questions and defend themselves, you know?
Right.
I mean, you could just, it's meaningless to vote on somebody if you're not there to defend themselves. And then, my last concern that I've been hearing from people is about, you know, complaints made in bad faith, and how those are gonna be addressed.
Complaints about what?
Complaints made in bad faith, say somebody accuses somebody of something just to get back at them, and it's dropped.
I think that's why you have a board.
Well, that is why you have a board, but what's gonna be the outcome? Oh, they got, they got accused.
Hey, it happened to me with the Ethics Board, and I think it's happened to some others here with the other board.
Well, obviously.
So, I mean, I, you know.
But your name is still tainted and talking through the newspapers and.
I agree, it still, still stays with you.
Yeah, it still stays with you, and I think, you know, it would be good to deter people from making bad faith claims.
So if somebody is not successful in their claim, we want to punish them for making a claim.
If the claim.
That is ridiculous.
It's unjust, no.
That is, that is.
Complaints unjust, just like.
If the claim's unjust, it will be dismissed, it, it, our ordinance doesn't need to be punitive to people making a claim, or, you, you all are the majority, maybe you do want to do that, I hope you don't.
I'm just bringing up what people have said to me, that's all. And I represent the citizens of Georgetown, Kentucky, and I respond to questions from my constituents, from the citizens that are in Georgetown, Kentucky, so.
And this is more, this is potentially even more serious than what the Ethics Board is, and we have had council members taken across the Ethics Board for no good reason, and it does, it stays with them, it stays with you personally, psychologically, and people say, oh, I remember that was in front of the Ethics Board. Do they always know the outcome? No, but they know it went in front of the Ethics Board, so.
Okay, so is the proposal then to have some punitive effect to people that have a claim that is not upheld? I'm just, you're bringing it up, is that what you're asking for?
I don't, I don't see how you can, I bet there's, I bet there's a law that says you can't.
I'm pretty sure there is, but that's what I'm hearing, that people want to punish folks who have unsuccessful claims.
I don't think it's punishing.
How do you wanna struck, how would you propose we do that?
Well, I say we vote on it, and we don't.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, you just, I mean, I think it would be good to deter people from making claims to get back at people.
It is, hopefully, they're genuine and sincere, but you know what, sometimes they're not, I experienced it myself, so Karen knows.
There's nothing that punishes someone on the ethics side from filing an ethics complaint, is there, if they're not successful?
No, but this is.
So why would we do it here?
Because there's money involved here.
There's money involved.
If there's a complaint against somebody, there's money and action that's here that's different than what the ethics is.
It may be.
I thought I understood that you were worried about the reputation, not the money that was.
It is, but if somebody, if somebody files a claim, they can file a claim, and if it's proven accurate, there's money involved, so why don't you do the opposite if it's legal to do it? And if you file a claim, as she says, a frivolous claim, and you take my reputation through, and it's frivolous, then why can't there be a counterclaim?
How do you determine that something's frivolous, though?
By, by you in court against that person.
So it would be court related, you would take the person to court?
Yeah, of course.
It wouldn't be a cause of action that we would establish.
Okay.
Civil action.
Well, that clarifies.
Suffered civil action.
Yeah, yeah, well, that clarifies it, yeah.
Right, well, that's, that's what I was getting at, how do you determine if it's frivolous? I mean, you, you ask a judge to determine that it's frivolous, I guess that could be that.
If someone makes false accusations against me in bad faith, and they caused me economic damages.
Right.
But it's no different than any other circumstance, I don't know why we would need to spill that out, however.
Well, so it's covered under, they would just go to court, they would just take it to court on the.
I think it is, yeah.
Okay.
If someone.
Okay, well, that's all I was asking, I just wanted to be clear, what we, what the.
Anytime you're economically damaged by something, you could, you could take them to court, I mean.
Yeah, 'cause some businesses, I mean, you know, it can really damage them, and they don't bounce back, and if we start losing our small businesses, you know, so. Alrighty.
Any other comments or questions? That will constitute first reading of the ordinance, and again, we'll expect second reading at the next meeting.
Go back to our, our reading issue.
We, we found that as well, but it's December the 11th is the drop dead date.
Okay, so we're good.
Yeah, good.
We'll hear that on the 25th, then, Bruce?
Bruce, the time won't expire until December the 11th. Bruce, the time won't expire until December the eleventh, so we can hear this safely at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
December the eleventh?
That's our deadline. Our next meeting will be.
November twenty-fifth.
November twenty-fifth.
Thanksgiving week, Monday, before Thanksgiving.
So that's more than ninety days?
No, no.
It'll be less than.
I'll send you an email about it.
December eleventh is the ninety days, though, right? That's what we're saying.
But the meeting will be the twenty-third.
November twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. That's when we'll address this again.
Well, that's more than ninety days.
No.
No.
The ending deadline, according to the minutes of the planning commission, is December the eleventh. We're going to vote on it on November twenty-fifth.
Oh, this month, okay.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We could push it to December if we wanted to.
We could, if we wanted to, but we're not. Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you, Bruce. Under city engineer, you have a municipal order approving an agreement with Kentucky American Water Company at Lanes Run Business Park. This is not a change order. This is an original bid that was part of the budget. We had budgeted this for just over seven hundred thousand dollars. This comes in at about five hundred eighteen, I think, Eddie. So if there are questions for Eddie, but that's basically what we're.
Need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded, that we approved the municipal order. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you, Eddie. Next, we've, we've been working for some time, various council members and citizens have complained about continuing water on Maddox Street. That seems to come off of the railroad yard property. And we have, Eddie's been working on it for some time. We've had it camered, we've looked at it, and we've gotten information from the railroad. We disagree with the size of their easement that they think they have. But this is a contract with Banks Engineering to help us with both a survey and some design work on what we need to do to get at this problem and fix it.
Make a motion for approval, Mayor?
Second, Mayor.
Yeah, second. If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Put a name to the face, he'll be.
We appreciate you being here tonight, and we need that problem solved, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, good news, I'm going to ask you not to consider item ten, which was a change order for a radio project. That was going to be pretty straightforward. It was going to be a slight change for our fire department and going to be handled within their existing departmental budget. Was the only reason I was willing to bring that change order. But there's some confusion about the final numbers, and we want to hammer those out before we ask the council to approve anything.
Thank you.
Item eleven on your agenda is first reading of an amendment to the personnel ordinance, sponsors Mr. Lesby and Mr. Stone. What we're doing here is simply making clear that the Revenue Commission employees are employees of the Revenue Commission. They're still on our retirement program, they're still on our benefit program, but they're actually employed by the Revenue Commission. So we're reflecting that with this change in the personnel ordinance. Does that require a summary?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Connie.
An ordinance clarifying that the Revenue Commission staff are not part of the city of Georgetown personnel. Summary: One, amend section two dash one one C of the Code of Ordinances, which sets forth the classifications, associated pay grades, and authorized positions for each department to clarify that Georgetown Scott County Revenue Commission staff are not employees of the city and are only associated with the city for certain matters. Two, provides for repeal and inconsistent ordinances, severability of provisions, and effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Port Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www georgetown ky gov. Introduced and publicly read for the first time November eleventh, 2019.
Thank you. That'd be first reading. Karen, I think this may have come up before. There were, we waited to take this action to make sure that we didn't affect their retirement status. But it clears things up a little bit. Okay, next item on the agenda, for the Police Department, a municipal, a municipal order approving an item for surplus. And since, we don't have a list, but we have a big picture of what we're declaring surplus. It's only one item, so Tracy gave you a picture. It's a very large truck.
Motion for it?
Thank you. Motion's been made in a couple of seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That gets us.
There'll be record breaking tonight.
Well, we're not through council comments yet. Well, that's right. We took several big things off the agenda. Let's see, Todd, could we start with you?
Sure. Couple of things in school-related. Congratulations to Royal Springs Middle School Football Team. They actually won their conference. They were the region three state champs and a state runner, or state semifinalist. They had an excellent season. I coached against them. They beat us indly, but it's okay. I won't take that. But they did a great job. They well deserved on their part. And Jeff Watts, who is the football coach at Scott County Middle School, is retiring from coaching from there. Jeff played at Georgetown College. He's coached in the youth league. At Scott County Middle School now for seven years, he's coached high school, and he's coached college. So congratulations, Jeff. He's done a great job working with the kids and adults in this community over the years, as he's done. So just a couple of things from them. That's all I've got.
Good, thank you.
I'm fine.
Just want to say the same thing about our veterans, how proud we should be of them. I mean, we've got many in this community throughout the United States that served, gave their lives. For us to be able to sit here and do what we're doing, it's an honor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. David?
Mayor, same thing. I don't get on Facebook a whole lot, so I'll just say it publicly. I just want to thank all the fine men and women that served this country and made it what it is today. Very appreciative.
Thank you. Connie?
I'm very thankful. That's all I got to say.
Good for you. Karen?
Happy Veterans Day to everyone, and that's it.
Thank you. Mark?
All good.
You're good. There's nothing else, if there's nothing else coming for the council, we will stand adjourned.